Okay, it is six. It is six o'clock on July 10th, 2024. I'm going to declare the meeting of the planning commission to come to order. We have the roll call, please.
Chair Solom.
Here.
Vice Chair Benyon.
Here.
Commissioner Dahl.
Here.
Commissioner Wood.
Here.
Commissioner Strauss Boyd. Commissioner Wilkins.
Here.
Planning Manager Boiski. Assistant Planner Speets.
Here.
At this time, we take a poll for the next meeting, which is going to be the 24th of July. See who's, yes, yes, yes.
Yep.
We'll have a quorum on the 24th, and that's when we meet next. Approval of minutes, and this is for May 15th. The chair will entertain a motion to approve of the minutes.
They're moved.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded. additions, corrections? objections? A lot of heads shaking.
I didn't see any.
Call a question, all those in favor of approving the minutes from the 15th of May, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close. The ayes have it, the minutes are approved. Public comments and concerns, we've got nobody signed up, and nobody in the audience. Public hearing, none. Old continuing business, none. Do business, housing, community development element.
Thank you. All right, commissioners, so as part of this packet, we have provided you with the draft housing sub-element. This is part of the community development element in Bonnie Lake's comprehensive plan. For anybody reviewing this recording, Bonnie Lake chooses to combine the housing element, the land use element, and the economic development elements together into one because of the interrelatedness of those issues. So tonight, we are really just reviewing the draft housing element. This has been presented to you as an entirely new sub-element due to the scope of the changes. As Commissioner Dahl noted before the meeting, his comprehensive plan section on housing, when he started as a commissioner in 2010, was only five pages. Obviously, what's in front of you is significantly expanded, and that has a lot to do with the way changes have been made to the Growth Management Act and additional bills being passed by the legislature over these last few years. It's resulted in not just a huge change in how all of the preparatory and data analysis work goes into these comprehensive plans, but also the plans themselves and really what needs to go into it. So a lot of what you're seeing in here is kind of the supporting data and review to get to the point of a robust housing element. The biggest change really has to do with House Bill 1220. So when the Growth Management Act was first adopted, it basically just encouraged you to plan for housing. And now that's switched to, you need to plan for housing, you have to demonstrate in a quantitative way that you can accommodate that housing, and you need to plan for it for all income levels. So not just market-driven and what comes to the table, but really being able to show that you, as a city or as a county, have thought out what that looks like for your lowest-income houses, households, all the way up through your most affluent households. So that's a big part of what's in here, and a big part of the changes in here also are really to try to explain that and tell that story. So it's a little bit more robust, and you'll see jurisdictions do the whole gamut, right? So some of them, all of this is in a technical memo, and it's an attachment. It's not in the body. We have chosen to put a good amount of it in the body, but we also have attachments like the land capacity analysis, the growth alternatives memo, et cetera, as well as the housing equity report that will be in appendix to the comprehensive plan. So all of that is intended to support where this has landed. The other thing that we really wanted to do with this is to provide some consistency amongst those sections. So I know you're not seeing it necessarily here tonight, but in that economic vitality element, which is not currently imaginary element, Bonnie Lake chooses to do it, as well as the land use element, that we're going through the regulatory context, so what we have to do and why that exists, the current conditions that are applicable to that particular topic, what our growth target is, and there was a major change to that pretty late in the game, which is why our meetings are very scrunched, and then getting into, all of that leading into the policies that we're proposing, the goals and policies. So hopefully, that structure and flow made sense to you as readers, but I'll be curious about your feedback on that. This draft has also been provided to Puget Sound Regional Council. They are the Metropolitan Planning Agency. They are responsible for regional coordination of planning between Kings, Snohomish, Kitsap, and Pierce counties. They also distribute your transportation funding and other funding from federal sources, and so ensuring consistency with those multi-county planning policies is incredibly important. It has also been distributed to the Department of Commerce for their preliminary review. So what we'll be doing is taking your feedback on this draft tonight, as well as the feedback they'll be giving us, and incorporating that as we take it forward to council as part of this kind of preliminary draft process. So. Not really knowing how you guys normally go through these things, I'm happy to go, either go through it kind of page by page. I've had some commissions that are like, let's just work our way through it, or if you have a bunch of questions and you just want to start there, that's fine, but I know this was a lot of reading, so I'm really willing to take your cue on what your preference is, since this is only my second meeting with you guys.
Thoughts?
I didn't have any questions off the back.
You're the newbie.
This is also my only, only my second meeting, so. It's a, it was a lot of reading and I'm learning a lot. So I follow your lead in terms of how this process should go or has gone.
Well, this, this particular discussion is very casual. It's not a public hearing, and so we don't have really a lot of the structure around it. So to me, any feedback is good feedback, things that you were like, oh, that's confusing, or I ended up finding it 10 pages later and really wanted to know about it now, or gosh, you spelled that word really wrong, like, I want to know those things now, rather than after it's adopted, because it's a lot harder to change it then. So any feedback at this stage is.
One thing, I got waylaid this morning, and I got told, well, we're having all this growth and everything, but the infrastructure's not catching up.
Mm-hmm.
Is there an answer to that?
So one of the major tenets of the Growth Management Act is to ensure that your infrastructure is keeping up with development to the, to the extent possible. So really, the idea is that new development is ensuring that there's adequate infrastructure for that new development. That doesn't address previous deficiencies. So other elements of the comprehensive plan include capital facilities, which really covers everything, parks, schools, hospitals. So those are all kind of incorporated into the local jurisdictions' planning efforts, as well as the utility planning and transportation planning. So the mobility element has that, all of that transportation stuff, so walking, biking, scootering, driving, et cetera. And then the capital facilities element is addressing more of those utilities and facilities and that kind of thing. So there are other components that we'll be looking at later. Cities, as part of these policies, really push for new development to address deficiencies that they create. There's kind of this planning concept of nexus where you can't ask a developer to do more than they're creating an issue for. And so that's really the basis of how you get to things like impact fees and that type of stuff, frontage improvements, that they're doing it to the extent that it's related to their project. But for past deficiencies, those are things that the city needs to put into those plans as, as things that have been identified as a need in order to go after funding and actually get it scheduled into long-term and short-term budgets. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So, I mean, I'm just thinking, you know, water and sewer is a really big issue in pretty much all the cities nowadays. Um, is that, would that be addressed in the housing plan, or would that be in another part of the comprehensive plan? Just because I'm, just, let me finish my thought here. The WSU Forest is, you know, got a lot of property in there, and the city owns some of the property, and I just was thinking that would be a good place for a water tank, maybe, you know. It seems like we're already buying water from the city of Tacoma right now. It seems like it would be a smart thing to do to.
Hmm.
Put in another well and another.
So the Midtown property, the WSU Forest property, you'll actually see a lot of that being addressed as part of the Parks, Trails, Recreation, and Open Space Plan that you're having a public hearing on on the 24th. That draft is out right now, if you want to start reading it. That site does include some stormwater infrastructure, but I don't know that it includes things like a reservoir site. They are in the process of building a new reservoir, if I remember correctly. Only been here two months. Under state law for water utilities, you are required to have inner ties with other public water providers. And so buying water from Tacoma isn't necessarily a bad thing. Keeping water flowing is a good thing, and having that as an emergency supply is a good thing. So there's pluses and minuses, and honestly, sometimes buying it from another provider is cheaper than making it yourself. I have not read the water comp plan, so I don't know all the ins and outs of why, but I'm sure our water supervisor would be happy to provide more information on that. But that is part of that other section. So we have a whole separate water comprehensive plan that meets other state law and Department of Health requirements, and that, I believe, was adopted in 2019 and would be in appendix to this comprehensive plan. The other thing to be aware of is, under state law, when you apply for a building permit, you have to demonstrate that you have adequate water. That has been a requirement for well over a decade. So we do check for those things, but it's a little bit more granular. Mm-hmm.
I got a question. Asked earlier about infrastructure, does that also include roads, corridors, and that kind of thing? Is that, is that technically a separate topic?
Infrastructure includes roads and trails and those kinds of corridors. So when we have a large enough development, we will require them to put in public roads, to put in frontage improvements. Typically, when you subdivide a property, you have to bring utilities to the lot before you can get final approval of that subdivision and move forward with construction. A lot of that is already baked into state laws around those things, as well as our development regulations. The policies in here push towards having that infrastructure in place, but it's very 50,000-foot level.
I remember the 410 veterans memorial drive rebuild was partly funded by, I'm not going to say, it's the housing development south of the city. Yeah, Tehalo, right? Tehalo, yeah. And I suppose when they build the road down into the Ordin Valley, that'll come out of them, too. What else?
I just had.
Yes.
Sorry. One question, there was, okay, so it's farther along, it's on mine, it's page 56, but it was the Housing Equality Report. Exhibit 14 and 15, I just couldn't totally understand the numbers. So it was comparing the median house value and housing costs. It was that, how much they're paying a month? That's what, that's the part that I was trying to figure out. It's, okay, on page, it's page 56 of 86. With the agenda packet. Yes. Yep, that one and the next one. I was just trying to figure out if it's like, that's the median cost of rent, and this is how much they're paying for rent?
Yeah, that's the median monthly rent.
So like, for, like, most households would pay like $2,718, and then the black population's paying $5,000?
So the, the median rent, the median monthly rent of $1748 was in 2021, the average of the cost of rent in Bonnie Lake, based on census data. This is showing how much households can afford compared to that rent.
Okay, that's what I was trying to figure out. I was like, am I looking at how much they're paying in rent, or how much they can, that was confusing me? So I just, thank you. Because I was like, wow, there's a big disparity in how much someone's paying.
Yeah, well, and obviously, folks make their own choices around that, and it's hard to get data about that, whereas income versus rent, you do have a little bit better data on. But basically, this is showing most households can afford well above the median rent. We have a couple of groups who can't. But what was interesting particularly about the American Indian group is, at least as of this dataset, that group was a 0% renter. They were 100%.
I thought that was interesting, but that's, so that's what I was trying to figure out. I was like, these groups, some of these groups didn't have rent, so that's what I was like, trying to figure out. So, okay, that totally makes sense of what they could afford.
If they were to rent, yes. They would not be able to afford the median rent. They would need some kind of subsidized housing.
Sounds good, thank you. I was just, I was trying to get those together. Thank you.
Do you have an idea of how to present that or adjust that in a way to make it clearer to folks? Because we, we struggled internally with trying to make these make a bit more sense.
I think the thing that confused me was the medium of, sorry, I'm 14, I think you're still on 15. Um, I was just looking at the titles. Like, medium affordable housing cost compared to median home value? That's the part that was like, okay, I, I get the home value part, I just couldn't figure out the median affordable housing cost. Like, I didn't, if I, if it was like, here, how much they could afford, or like, something that, I think it was that wording was confusing me.
Saying what they are paying versus what they can afford to pay?
Yeah, or, yeah, like, the median versus what they can afford to pay, or something like that. I don't, I don't know, I am not a wordsmith. I am a scientist and an English person.
Well, we want it to make sense, right?
So that was the only part that confused me, was just that wording, because I was like, is that what they're paying? And this is what, yeah.
I honestly, I'm just really excited you made it that far in the packet.
Oh, no. I like this stuff, I love data and charts, but it was just one of those, like, I was staring at it for a while going, I don't know what it's saying.
Okay, we'll noodle on that a little bit more and.
Yeah, and maybe I just needed to read the things a little bit more. Sorry, if I, if it was answered in the.
It shouldn't take five minutes of staring at it to think you maybe understand it, so we can definitely.
It might have been, like I said, it might have been explained in the paragraph, and I was just focusing more on the chart, so that, it totally could be user error.
So it would help if it was changed to, this is what people are paying, and this is what they can pay?
Yeah, or, yeah, or something like that.
It could be affordable rent. So maybe in exhibit 15, the blue is affordable rent based on median income.
Yep, that would work.
And update the gray header to say monthly median rent, and consider how to adjust the title. And then for the home value, do kind of the same thing, affordable home value based on.
Household income or something like that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that'd be good.
I think the other thing that's hard about kind of the timing of this data, and we were having a little bit of a conversation around this before the meeting, is obviously this lags a few years. And so we're really not seeing how much of an impact COVID had on all of this, and I anticipate it will be fairly severe when we do the next data update. But right now, it's very speculative. What was interesting, though, if you got to the foreclosures and evictions section, more so the foreclosures, but our rate here in Bonnie Lake is lower than the average. And so that was encouraging, that households really, even though they may have had some impact due to COVID, overall managed to stay in their homes over the last few years. And so that was, that was encouraging.
A lot of the data, data came from the census, maybe, 2020?
20, 2020, 2021, American Community Survey, the economic data, so the commute data and that kind of thing, it's from older ACS surveys. And then the other issue was the census data was released late, and so that, that impacted all the growth targets and allocation, along with the change in state law about looking at low, extremely low, very low-income households.
Anything else?
It was just like, along those lines, it's going to be interesting about commuting and stuff like that, like, because right now, we don't have, we have distance of less than 10 miles. Does that, I'm guessing that includes people that work from home? And so just kind of, that category's probably boomed since COVID, of how many people are not traveling for work anymore.
I'm hearing silence and.
What is the process now? So I don't know if it's the right time to ask that question, or, okay, thank you. Tell me.
Do your thing, fine.
Well, and I'm just taking notes on this last one really quick. So are you asking about the overall process for the comp plan, or are you asking about this section specifically?
Just the overall process, I think.
Okay.
About the comp plan and what our role is.
Okay.
In that.
So right now, we're really in the process of drafting all of these elements. Some of them have fairly minor updates. A lot of what was done with the 2015 plan already complies with the changes since then. So that's helpful for us. But essentially, over the summer, we go through drafting and reviewing those drafts. Your input is helping us get to a version that we're able to put out for public review and environmental review this fall. So essentially, with any non-project action, so things like a plan or changes to your development regulations, in addition to the public hearing process, there's also usually an environmental review process. Some things are exempt, but a lot of them aren't. And so that legislative process and that public review process of that draft will happen kind of early fall, we hope, September, October, November. You, as a planning commission, are responsible for holding a public hearing, making a formal recommendation to council. So we'll take all the feedback we get in that early fall period incorporated into the final version for that public hearing, and then council will make a decision on whether or not to adopt it, or adopt it with some modifications. It is technically due by December 31st. We are going to do our darndest to meet that. These periodic updates are a big lift, so that will probably mean for you guys a wonky schedule, right? Normally, you're the first Wednesday. Obviously, this month, we're doing things a little bit off, and that's true of any periodic update cycle, that things will be a little compressed. This time, a bit more because of late changes made by legislature. So we have the Parks, Trails, and Space. Why do I feel like there's an R?
PT.
Recreation and Open Space Plan. So that's a component of this that will be at public hearing a bit early, and the reason we're doing that is because it needs to be certified in time for us to apply for grant funding in September. So really, it's kind of an appendix, like the Water Comprehensive Plan, or the Stormwater Plan, or that kind of thing, to this comprehensive plan. So what we'll be doing with you guys over the summer is these iterative drafts, really getting your feedback. Are we missing anything? Is stuff unclear? That sort of thing, so that what we put out to the public for review, 60 days of review, is something that makes as much sense as possible. Does that make sense? Okay.
Thank you, it does make sense, thank you.
Anything more on community development? We'll see this next public hearing?
Well, you guys, as part of the planning newsletter, will get notice of the entire plan going out for a draft, and you'll see other elements moving forward. But yes, you won't see it back here for public hearing unless, if we get some pretty major feedback from Commerce and PSRC, I'm hoping not, we really tried to follow their checklist. We might bring it back, at least as an FYI, to tell you what we're changing, because I don't want to get to the point of public hearing and it be totally different than what you saw now. But other than that, I would not expect to see it.
Thank you.
That was great information, like, it was nice to see all the different charts of things.
Taps update, no advanced materials. So we're looking forward to having an evening of music, crowds, and answering questions from the people.
Kennedy, did you want to talk about that one, or?
Pointing forward, there was a suggested motion in here that we move this forward to the council. Should we, should we do that? I guess.
I. I didn't have a, I mean, I'm kind of sitting here going, well, I, I'm struggling a little bit with keeping track of the council schedule. I don't know where Director Sullivan is on that, so I didn't have a chance to talk to him about that particular line. I know he was really wanting to do that with the growth alternatives. He probably wants to do it with housing. It might be safer for us to do a motion, but we don't know what changes PSRC and Commerce are going to come back with, so you can caveat that with, we're okay with it. I don't, yeah, I just, I don't know what his plan is for, I know we are bringing it to them, so it may be worthwhile to go ahead and do that.
So Commissioner Dahl, thank you for catching that.
Okay.
Do you want to read the motion and we'll carry it forward?
Right here. So I move to recommend that the housing section of the community development element proceed to the city council with comments.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded, discussion? Call the question, all those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Close. The ayes have it, the motion goes forward. Tunes it taps.
Would you, do you want me to talk about it, or do you want to talk about it?
I, I.
Oh, okay.
Signed up.
We can work on, on that next time.
We can work on, on that next time, it's a good time. So, um, as you're aware, we are doing public outreach on the comprehensive plan and the Parks Plan, uh, out at Toons at Taps. Our Associate Planner, Mehdi, is out there tonight. Right now, we have, um, boards with the current, uh, future land use map and the proposed land use map based on the growth alternative that was, um, approved by council. So with kind of the tweaks that are in there. We also have, um, the draft plan for the Midtown Park, the Sports WSU Forestry Land. Um, and we are hoping in the next week or so to have a schematic for Downtown Park. I know we have one for Allen York Park, it just wasn't in a format where we could print it out for this evening, so we should have that by next week. Um, and we also have like a informational flyer about what the comprehensive plan is, how to get more information, and then kind of all the bills that have really influenced it. This past year is a single sheet handout. So that's kind of the plan for that. Um, Kennedy or Mehdi will be at every single one, Jason, along with you guys.
Sure.
Can we have a show of hands on who's planning on going next week?
I have a class, uh,
It's okay if you can't.
Yeah, I, I have a class in Idaho I have to be at, so that's one night I won't be here, but I'll be back for the next one.
Kennedy, what time, next Wednesday?
I think five, music starts at 6:30 and then it ends at 8:30.
Okay, we have a, I have a beautified Bonnie Lake tool inventory, but as soon as that's done, I can be there after that. I just don't know.
One of the dates we're talking about.
Next Wednesday. Oh, that's on Tuesday, I'm looking at the wrong date, okay, just a minute, I might be free. I am, I am free.
Yeah, the 17th, what others do we have?
One, we have Planning Commission. And then the 30th, the following one. Yep, 31st would be the next. And then August, we're not exactly sure if we're going to be having, eh?
31st will be at 5 o'clock too.
Yeah, we are still trying to do the 7th. We don't know if we need to add another one yet. It's really dependent on our ability to churn through the elements, as well as get stuff back from consultants.
Okay, I, I got lost, we're, I thought I was talking about Toons at Taps.
Yep, we're just not, there's not sure when the Planning Commission meetings will be in August.
So we, we would love somebody to join us on the 17th and the 31st. We definitely have a meeting on the 24th, since we've done public notice for that.
Yeah, I could be there on the 31st. Um, I do know, I think we have to, uh, make sure there's not more than three of us there.
Right.
Be on the 31st as well. Well, good, we can take, use lawn car.
Yeah. And we'll pick each other up and do it on the 31st.
Yeah, okay, so 31st covered, do you have three there?
Yeah.
So, and I can be there this Wednesday.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm tentative, I was emailing with Kennedy about the 17th, I might be able to be there, I have a work event. And I'm north, so just a matter of, gonna go till probably 5:30. So I could get there maybe for a little bit of it, I just don't know yet. So if I can kind of play that by ear and see, thank you.
Now, will there be paid parking at this time or is it going to be open parking? Hopefully, we'll find a park.
Because usually they close the boat launch during Toons on Taps, right?
Yeah, I think that's fine.
It's fun. I think we've addressed the Toons at Taps. Is there anything else on that topic? We've got Toons at Taps, we've got the meetings, and that's going to be through August. Got a public hearing, 24th?
No, I remember the public hearing is going to be at the end, when all of it's together. We're not doing public hearings in each little part.
There is a public hearing on the Parks Plan at the next meeting.
Yeah.
And there's a public, there will be a public hearing sometime later this fall on the whole comprehensive plan.
Yeah. Got that. Will it go to the order? Correspondence. Staff comments.
None additional.
Uh, Commissioner comments?
Yes, I've got two. Um, so one was, uh, I got a email from Patty McCann, she's the payroll person, and she said that, uh, somebody had contacted her and, uh, claimed to be me and, uh, and asked that, you know, my, uh, direct deposit be moved to another and, uh, yeah, so she, she contacted me and, and I said, no, that's not me. Um, anyways, I wanted you guys to be aware of that and, um, I wondered if anybody else had had that happen, uh, okay.
That stinks.
It's just me, okay. And then the other thing, uh, was just, uh, I did want to do show and tell here, but this is the, uh, the comprehensive plan from, I got, I inherited it from Randy McKibben when I took his place. And, uh, I was interviewed by him and Grant. But anyways, uh, yeah, and the housing element is truly just, just five pages right there. And, uh, if anybody wants to look at it, they can. If you guys want to borrow it, I'd just like it back at some point, but, uh, it, it's kind of, kind of cool just to look through it.
The Historical Society may want it.
Yeah, yeah, I'll probably donate it to them one of these days.
Any other Commissioner comments? Uh, I want to make a motion to excuse Commissioner Strauss Boyd.
I would second that.
Oops, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
He's excused. I talked to Mr. Sullivan about the Parks Plan. You and I talked about it at Beautify Bonnie Lake. What we have sent forward differs significantly from what the city did.
The, yeah, City Council.
Yeah. And the, uh, area where we're going to have the dog park and everything has now become playing fields, two of them. And over there by the Civic Campus.
Like the Justice Center and
Justice Center.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, that's going to become where most of the other stuff goes.
Like a community center and something else?
Community center and dog park maybe.
Yeah. So I'm not sure what the tree camp is going to look like.
I don't know.
Is that because we got a new mayor and everything is all in turmoil now?
From experience, we'll do a lot of work on something, send it up to council and council has different information or different concepts. We kind of go, huh? Best way to describe it. I remember when we were doing the zoning for Midtown and one of the council members said, oh, let's just open it up to everything. And Heather and I were jumping up and down going, you want a gravel pit in here? Do you want junkyarding? Sometimes they don't catch everything. When we get the, uh, packet, we should read it closely.
Yep.
Any other Commissioner comments? Motion to adjourn.
I moved.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it, we're adjourned.
Sent a message to Debbie Strauss Boyd, but never got a response.
I wonder if she got stuck in traffic.
Yeah, she was going to be remote.
Oh, I wonder if she can get on.